Senator Franklin, School Board Vice Chair, and the Administrative, Informal, and Workshop Session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia is hereby convened at 3:30 p.m. on the 16th day of April 2024. At this time, I will ask Madam Clerk to please tally the roll.
Thank you, Vice Chair Franklin. Present in school board chambers is Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Vice Chair Franklin, Ms. Kendrick, and Ms. Manning, and Ms. Weems.
All right, thank you. I wanted to mention that Chair Melnick is not present today due to personal reasons, being out of town. As Vice Chair, I will assume the duties of Chair for this meeting. Please note, members of the public will be able to observe the school board meeting through live streaming on schoolboard.vbschools.com/medians/live, broadcast on VBTV, Channel 47, and on Zoom. Thank you to all of those who have joined us in person and online. We're going to move to School Board Administrative Matters and Reports. Do any school board members have anything to report? No? Okay. I want to mention there is a sign-up sheet to be passed around for the 2024 VSBAs Spring Networking Forum on April 25 at 5:00 p.m. at IC Norcom High School in Portsmouth. And I'll go ahead and get that moving around. And then we are going to welcome Mr. Jack Freeman, Chief Operations Officer for our BF Williams and Bayside 6th Grade Discussion.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair Franklin, members of the board, and Dr. Robertson. As we discussed during our CIP budget deliberations, we're here today to receive your guidance on where to look for further reductions in the size of the designs for the proposed BF Williams and Bayside 6th School. As a brief background, we came to the board back in the summer of 2022, prior to any design work, to receive your guidance on this school. At the time, it was the number two school on our list behind Prince Anne High School. It was critical for us to know if Bayside 6 would remain separate from Bayside Middle School. You directed us to engage with the public to inform your decision. Staff did that through surveys and face-to-face meetings with the public. Following that engagement, you directed us to design this school to accommodate BF Williams, which is a grade four and five elementary school, and Bayside 6. Those two schools are currently housed in two different school buildings. This combined school was then designed to the 30% level as part of the PPEA interim agreement. The primary purpose was to get it to enough level of detail for the contractor to develop a guaranteed maximum price. During financing work we did during the PPEA interim agreement, we learned that the Prince Anne High School was challenging from a debt service perspective. So we recommended, and you approved, a CIP with BF Williams-Bayside 6 as the next priority school. Now, I know there's nuance to that statement, and it's generally correct, and it's why we're talking about BF Williams today and not Prince Anne High School. So that's the context behind that. So during those discussions, you expressed concern for the size of the designs, and we requested your guidance for where to make reductions. This meeting is intended and enable you to provide us with that guidance. You will get to participate in three small groups with differing areas of focus to enable you to provide that guidance. This is our agenda. We're going to arm you with some information and things to consider before rotating through the three stations. At each station, you'll have about 20 minutes to discuss and provide feedback. Following the small group discussions, we will reconvene as a group, and I will use the feedback from the individual groups that you provided to help you give us guidance from the whole board. Here is some data on the two existing schools and buildings. I will call your attention to the current enrollment, 391 for Williams, 314 for Bayside 6. We'll be discussing enrollment projections later in the brief. Here are the parameters we used for the 30% design. We briefed you on that design on January 9. During the development of that design, the intent was to replace the two existing schools and consolidate them into one building. There are efficiencies inherent in taking two buildings and putting them into one, and you can see some of those efficiencies in the blue bubble in the middle. But there were still inefficiencies in the two schools-one-building concept. There were two separate school administrative teams. Independent elementary school and middle school bell schedules created the need for duplicate spaces like gyms and cafeterias. And with only one grade level using middle school programming spaces, those dedicated spaces would be underused in comparison to other middle schools, which cycle three grade levels through those spaces. Another factor affecting the size of the school is the projected enrollment. 450 for Williams, that's up from the current 391, and 400 for Bayside 6, that's up from the current 315. Enrollment goes up, you need more space. Further, these class sizes are planned for 20:1 student-to-teacher ratio. This is how Bayside 6, 7, and 8 are currently planned. You can read the rest of the bullets under each school, and you can note the number of dedicated spaces like art, music, gym, dining, library, and so on. And this is the design we shared with you on January 9. Note the shared areas in blue and the separate spaces in red. When you adopted the CIP several weeks ago, it enabled staff to focus on the design for this unique school. During those discussions, we shifted from a two-schools-one-building concept to a one-school concept with a consolidated administration and synchronized schedules, which enabled the elimination of combination or combination of spaces. You can see what were previously planned to be dedicated spaces are now mostly shared spaces. We also updated the projected enrollment. 300 for Williams, which is lower than it was previously, and 550 for Bayside 6, which is higher than it was previously. The total students remains the same at 850. All right, here are the projections. Williams is in green, and you can see the projections go down over time to 300 in the year 2930, and it remains stable thereafter. Bayside 6, however, increases to 550 between the 29 and 31 timeframe, and is projected to remain stable thereafter. These projected increases to Bayside 6 are due to new housing potential development in the Bayside Middle School Zone over the next five to 15 years. Now, our demographers want you to know that these projections are based on the best available information. That being said, projections are projections, and the more years covered in that projection, the greater the uncertainty. All right, let's focus on the Bayside Middle School Zone map on the left. In yellow is the tri-campus zone, that's the zone for Williams. Bayside Middle School Zone comprises tri-campus, Luxford, Shelton Park, and Bayside Elementary Schools. And you can see the new housing developments that are under construction in blue and the Burton Station mixed-use area, which is projected but not yet under construction. That new construction in blue is anticipated to be a catalyst for the other projects. Our planning for new school buildings do not account for a need to rezone, so we plan to accommodate additional capacity. That being said, this board could direct the use of rezoning to make the best use of our current buildings, rather than designing a building to accommodate that growth. On the map to the right, you can see all of the middle school zones. You should consider if you would like us to build this school smaller with a plan to redistrict in the future to accommodate that growth.
Mr. Freeman, can I ask you to go back and repeat that part? Because we don't want anybody to miss that.
Yep. So I'm going to finish where I was in the script because it anticipated where you were going to go there. So to make it as clear as possible, you could direct us to plan on rezoning Bayside Middle School students to Independence Middle School, for example. And that would accommodate the additional capacity that those new projects would build. I'm going to pause, I see a couple of head nods, I see a confusing face. All right, so big picture. When we build a school, we project what the enrollment is going to be in the future, and we plan on that to accommodate the new school. The board could say, "We don't want you to use that as a planning element for the new school. Don't plan on 850 students, plan on 650 students." And then any over-enrollment that comes will be rezoned in the future to a building that has capacity. Does that make sense?
So, does the Bayside 7th and 8th have capacity? I mean, my thoughts are, why wouldn't we just put the sixth grade back into that building?
So this is why we have three small groups to be able to have those detailed discussions. I'm setting up the things that you should consider for discussion when you go into those small groups. So what you just asked would be great, and we have a group design for you to be able to provide that type of input.
Okay, all right.
And we'll get to that, where that part is later in the brief. We're going to go through some other... All of this is going to generate food for thought, so that when you get to your small groups, you can get all that stuff out.
And that obviously would save a lot of money, but we'll get to that.
Well, we're going to talk about how to estimate what those projected savings might be.
Okay.
Dr. Robertson, good. Go. So, it's funny, I'll just go to the last part. This is a complex topic. Don't worry if you don't completely understand at this point, you have an opportunity in the small groups to take it all up. All right, so, let me go back to this slide. Those two slides were to give you a good understanding of the projected enrollment for those group discussions. Let's relook at this one to review the efficiencies. Staff has recently settled on the result in going, and that's the result of going to a one-school concept. Note the number of shared spaces listed on this slide. And here are the effects on square footage of the current design. Staff recommends reducing and combining the spaces as listed on the left with an estimated reduction of about 19,000 gross square feet. You can see the intended adjustments to design. The red boxes with the X's indicate a reduction in space. On the bottom right, you can see intended increase in space on the sixth-grade wing to accommodate projected enrollment. This is the first floor of the design, and this is the second floor. All that data on the left and the 19,000 square feet remains the same. All right, we've heard any questions and statements made about comparisons for this building. To be clear, the school board directed us to design a unique school for which there is no direct comparable. So without direct comparables, here are some things to consider. You can see that our two current buildings have a combined total of 134,000 square feet, and that's approximately 190 square foot per pupil. The 30% design we briefed you, two schools, one building, we briefed you on January 9, is 216 square feet per pupil. With what we just proposed, that brings us to 194 square foot per pupil at 165,000 square feet. Although there are no direct comparables, here are the elementary schools and middle schools in the state of Virginia that had a contract award date in 2022 or 2023. Elementary schools are above the blue line, middle schools are below the blue line. Note the square foot per pupil on both. Those elementary schools are designed for 600 to 1,000 elementary schools, all involved in the same programming. Our school is planned for 300 elementary school students, and there will be less efficiency in square foot per pupil based on that. The middle schools with the greatest operating capacity, 1916 and 1918, you can see it over there on the left, have the smallest square foot per pupil, and they serve three grade levels. You directed us to build a school that is projected to have 550 middle school students, only serving one grade level. Additionally, the current standard for our design is for 20:1 student-to-teacher ratio. The schools listed on this page likely have a larger student-to-teacher ratio. When you look back at the red box on the right, our cost per square foot is on track to be comparable. These schools have a contract award date three to four years prior than the earliest expected date for this school. Our cost per square foot is on track. As you go into your groups, here are some rules of thumb to estimate upfront cost savings. This is how you can estimate the projected savings for space reductions you're considering. Keep in mind that there is a cost related to time. We all know the expression, "Time is money." In this case, it can be estimated. For every additional year to get this project moving, it will likely cost more than $5 million in inflation. So for every month, that's about $425,000. As an example, if we take two months to save 1,000 square feet, we would have saved $720,000 in building costs, but the estimated inflation would cost us $850,000. That's a net loss for us. We should be focusing on the bigger items while trying to keep the project moving. Most of our discussions have been about the size and efficiency of the building. It's important to note the estimated operating budget, long-term staffing cost savings. This plan would have a net reduction of about 8.3 full-time equivalent employees, which is projected to save about $820,000 in the first year after combining these schools into one school. That cost would be avoided every year thereafter. So after about 10 years, that's $9.4 million in staffing cost savings. Point there is the efficiency isn't just in the building design, it's in other factors like staffing cost savings. All right, that should arm you with the best available information to inform your discussions. There will be three stations. At the first station, shown as Group 1 on the slide, you will be discussing learning spaces. That's the spaces in blue and green. Proposed topics for discussion are the student-to-teacher ratio, and we've given you some estimations to support that discussion. You can see that on the slide. You may also want to discuss the size of the classrooms. You should know that these classrooms have been designed at 800 square feet, which is the minimum state standard for elementary school classrooms. So there is no savings to be had on the elementary school side. The minimum state standard for middle schools is 700 square feet. So there's a potential reduction to consider there. You may also want to discuss collaboration spaces. At the second station, Group 2 on the slide, the focus will be on areas colored in yellow, like the gym, dining, and library spaces. You may want to discuss the multipurpose room at this station and the hall outside the library for potential space savings. At the third station, that's Group 3 on the slide, we don't have any potential areas of reduction for the spaces in orange and gray, but you're welcome to discuss those. At this station, you may want to discuss the lifecycle cost savings for combining these schools, rezoning as a tool to reduce the projected number of students. This building will serve, like we talked about a little bit earlier, and any other items and ideas that you may have that we have not presented to you. We will collect all the data from those meetings and regroup here in a little bit over an hour. Please keep in mind you have 20 minutes at each station. Conversations are really going to need to be focused to be able to get done what you need to get done in 20 minutes. All right, starting at Group 1, and Group 1 will remain up here, we have Ms. Franklin, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Culpepper, and Ms. Kendrick. At Group 2, in the back of chambers here, we have Ms. Riggs, Ms. Manning, and Mr. Callen. And then in Group 3, in the school board conference room, we have Ms. Weems, Ms. Owens, and Ms. Brown. One final thought before we break. We're focusing a great deal on some individual metrics. As you go through your discussions, here are some questions that you may want to come back to. Are we focusing on the right metric or metrics? And are we focused on what is best to meet the educational needs of the students this building is intended to support? With that, I think we're ready to break.
And thank you. So for clarification, if we have some suggestions or ideas, as Ms. Riggs, like her idea about what is the current state of the seventh and eighth-grade building, and could we, you know, put the sixth graders back in that? That would go into Table 3, is that correct?
Group 3, which will be in that room.
So Table 3, any new ideas?
Correct.
Thank you.
Go. So, I want to be clear about how we ended up with sixth graders in their own building, what happened to cause this to happen. And Ms. Weems, you were on the board at the time. At the time, our sixth graders' scores were so low that the state was coming down on us for what were we going to do to help these students? And one of the solutions we came up with was we felt that those particular students, because of their demographics, whatever, needed a little bit more coddling. That was the way it was put, remember? And so we put, right, and so we put them in a building with, and specifically, we even hired more elementary teachers, not secondary teachers, but elementary teachers and an elementary principal in that building so that those, because that's just a fact, elementary teachers just cuddle their students more, they really do. And so we gave them an opportunity to have more ability to meet with their teachers and have more time to, you know, have discussion with their teachers, and so that's why we ended up with where they are now. And so before we go thinking about putting them back into Bayside Middle School with the seventh and eighth graders, we need to think about, can we still accommodate those sixth graders in the way they're being accommodated now in their own sixth-grade campus? Just, it's just a thought, and I think we need to think hard about that before we go moving it back, because, like I said, it all started because the state was looking at us like, "What are you going to do to help these particular students?" And that was our answer, and it has helped.
Yes, and some see that as a permanent solution, and some saw that as a temporary solution, and that's what this board decided on.
All right. Thank you, ladies, and for the recap, and we are going to get started because I know you have a full schedule planned, so, thank you.
Sounds great. We'll wait for you to get in place, then we'll start the 20-minute clock, and then we'll show you which one to rotate to when you're done.
You'll have school staff in those groups as well, in case you have questions. You'll have school staff in those groups as well in case you have questions. You'll have school staff in those groups as well in case you have questions. You'll have school staff in those groups as well in case you have questions.
Thank you. What's that? Yeah, thank you. All right, Ms. Franklin, I'm deferring to you for when you're ready.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Freeman.
All right. So first, thank you very much. That was excellent. I appreciate all the feedback. So, short notice, I'll have the group leads come up and assist me where needed. The intent behind this was to be able to get your feedback for where we're gonna go look and not to fix everything. Regina, can you forward that to the second to the last slide, I'll call it? All right. So, the intention here is to make sure that there was a preponderance of feedback about an item in order to be able to get the guidance from the whole board to be able to go there. So, we're gonna kind of work through that related to the preponderance of feedback for what we saw. So, I'm gonna start with the group that was in the back here. We had general consensus around eliminating the access hallway to the library, which would save us about 2,500 square feet. I related that. General consensus to move in that direction. Seeing head nods, so I'm gonna say we're gonna move in that direction. All right. Related to the gym multipurpose room, and we brought in the discussion about the music/band support. The general consensus that we have is to keep the gym and the multipurpose room at about the 8,000 square feet level. And that could be an 8,000 square foot gym, or it could be a 6,000 square foot gym with a 2,000 foot multipurpose room. And there was a little bit of flexibility depending upon perspective. But the preponderance of the feedback was to explore adding dedicated music space back into the building. For sixth grade. Yep. Okay. Yes, I talked about all of them. So. Good, sounds good. So, there was most consensus, to be fair, around, hey, keep the gym in the multipurpose room, or an area about that square footage. We still did have a preponderance of the group to say add the music back in. Okay. So, we, what the intent behind this is to get your guidance, so that we can go do some work and come back to you to get final approval. So, what I'm gonna propose then is we've got guidance to go back and put it in, and then you guys can, later time, you can then deliberate on it and tell us exactly what you want to do as a group. But we will come back with a proposal that includes adding a music space back in there and what the effects of that will be. You guys can then deliberate and tell us whether you want to keep it as a group or whether to remove it. All right. So, that's all we had from that group. Melissa, we got good notes there? On what we just determined? Good. All right. Let's go to this group where we're talking about learning spaces. The preponderance of the feedback is, was a desire to explore different student-to-teacher ratios. And there were different opinions. Some felt strongly to keep it at 21. Others felt that it could go to 22. Others felt that it could go greater. What it all means is, we need to go do some work and then come back to you and share reasoning behind it, what potential consequences of those variables ratios would be, so that you can then make a determination that we can move forward with. So, we have that guidance. I'm seeing general head nods. All right. We will come back with the student-to-teacher ratio stuff. From that group, that was the only thing that we got to preponderance on. Looking for Amy. Correct?
Yeah.
Good. All right. Melissa, the group back in the conference room, they had a preponderance of feedback, I believe, to go explore whether sixth grade should be reincorporated into middle, back into Bayside Middle School, correct, Melissa? So, our intention is, is we will take that guidance, and then we'll come back with information related to what the consequences, and I mean that in a positive and negative way, for realigning that school with sixth grade back in. Were there any other preponderance? Okay. So, although there was other feedback that was given, that was the preponderance of what we had. So, now this is the opportunity to be able to have limited discussion with the intent of providing us guidance that we can execute at that point. So, I'll, it's no longer appropriate for me to look at individuals to go to questions, so I'll go to Ms. Franklin.
Okay. So, when you said you were go back and look at the consequences for adding Bayside back to the middle school, you're not just looking at the consequences for cost, you're also looking at the academic consequences as well, right?
That's the primary part. So, that goes back to the comment that I made about, hey, when we think about these things, we're trying to do something that is then in the best interest of the students that are gonna be impacted by that. So, I heard you mention discipline in there. Certainly, there's the academic piece. It's the holistic effect of why do we currently do business like that? And what would be the recommendation for moving forward?
Thank you. All right. Ms. Riggs?
Also, with moving them back into the sixth grade, back in seventh and eighth grade, that would make it the largest middle school, from what I understand.
So, the, it may be, the best way to do this is for us to get your guidance and intent. We can come back and we will lay out a presentation that will go through all that stuff.
Okay. And you'll also go through if that happens, that we could look at rezoning and putting some of those kids into one of the other middle schools.
Yes, I think that could extend in many different areas of how to solve problems.
Major culture shock to do that, to do what we're gonna do if we look at that, so.
Yes.
All right. Ms. Anderson?
I just wanna say, I'm not opposed to the idea of putting those students back at the Bayside Middle School. But we really have to make sure that when that, if that happened, we would still maintain the ratio, classroom ratio for those sixth graders especially, of 20 to 1 or 21 to 1. I wouldn't want to put them in the middle school situation where they would have like 25, 26, 27 students in their class. I wouldn't want to do that to them, ever. So, but I'm not opposed to it. If it meant that we didn't have to build, we could save a lot of money by not having to build that whole school for this. But on the other hand, one of the comments that I made here at this table was, yes, I agree that maybe you could go 21 to 1 or 22 to 1, but I would have heartburn to go higher than that. 22 to 1 would still be difficult, I think, but I'm in favor of keeping those students at 20 to 1 if we can possibly do it.
I understand. The preponderance of the direction from the board was that we will explore the class ratios, the student-to-teacher ratios. That's the preponderance that we got. And when I brought it up, there was general agreement from the board. So, I understand your perspective, the direction that we've just received, the guidance, is that we need to come back to you and talk about what the consequences of having a different student-to-teacher ratio.
And that new development that was shown to us, where a lot of students are gonna come in, that would be very easily, you know, rezoned to Independence Middle instead of, I mean, when you have a new development coming in, we do that a lot of times, and it doesn't really affect a whole lot of people that are already established at one school. When you've got a new development that's being built, we often would rezone that. We've often done that in the past. So, that's not anything new.
We have, based on the positioning, there may be some challenges, because it's not like some other ones where we projected, you know, in advance and we carved a little area out.
Right.
A little bit deeper into that. So, I don't wanna leave you with the impression that that's gonna be a relatively easy thing to do.
All right.
Just a small clarification of the 20 to 1. It felt to me, as we were going through these conversations, that the majority of participants really hope that 20 to 1 sticks, but we need to be knowledgeable in what are the impacts of going bigger. So, I think that's, you know, that's on us to, you know, give you that information, but it did seem like there's a clear desire to keep those rooms small.
Yeah. And it was pointed out to me that, at one time, we had our students, those students were at the, I call it the old Aragona Building, because it was Aragona for many years. And then, at one time, a long time ago, they put those students back into the middle school setting. And then what happened was their grades and their SOL scores plummeted drastically, and that's about 10 years ago is when we did it again. We separated them back. I was on the board about 10 years ago when we separated them back and put them in the Jericho Road facility. But I was, I don't know for sure, but Ms. Williams, you might have been on the board when, if that happened in the past, where they were at Jericho- when, if that happened in the past, where they were at Jericho Road and they put them back. I'm not sure.
Okay. All right, Ms. Owens.
Okay, thank you. The one thing that was kind of difficult for me during this process was trying to wrap my mind around what the new and innovative scheduling situation is going to be, because currently we don't have middle school on the elementary school schedule and how that's going to fit together, quarters versus semesters, and how we're using these spaces on these electives. And so maybe when we have more information about that, I'll be able to kind of wrap my mind a little better. Certainly not opposed to the exploration of having them back in the middle school. But if the sixth graders remain, if we keep down this track, I think it's really important that we have at least three music spaces. At sixth grade, have three music programs plus the four, five grade levels. And those spaces are typically designed for what they're used for. So they need storage for very expensive, you know, equipment and orchestra and all of those things. The stage area, I don't know when the last time people have been to middle school during lunch, to think that that is going to be instructional use for music, or that we're going to have these two competing sounds, it just seems unrealistic to build it that way on purpose. We have buildings that are older and are having to tolerate that, but to build it that way on purpose. And then with the gym size, I definitely don't want to see it go any smaller than the 8,000, having just been at Bayside Six. They currently don't have enough space in their gym to do what they need to do to be able to house all the students. And so those students at Bayside Six are not getting the same movement time as middle schoolers are in other schools. They're having more classroom PE setting time. And we know that there is a correlation between movement and behaviors and movement and trauma and all kinds of things. I think it's really important that if we're saying this was done for this particular reason for these students who are struggling, that we don't set them up in a situation where they're getting less of what they would need than the rest of the students in our district. So those are my thoughts on those two. Thank you.
All right. I believe we have the guidance and feedback that we need. To be clear, the one thing that we talked about earlier is there was no discussion related to changing the building capacity based on a plan to rezone rather than do that. There was a discussion related to rezoning, related to accommodating the new housing and a moving sixth grade back into Bayside Middle School. Make sure that I've generally agreed.
Can you say that again?
We did not have a preponderance of feedback related to rezoning, using rezoning as a tool to keep this school smaller.
I think we did talk about, I mean, are you talking about if sixth grade stays or...?
If sixth grade stays. We did have it related to if it moves back into the middle school. It was not a part of, hey, build the sixth grade wing smaller and then plan on moving those students to, for example, Independence Middle School.
I mean, I think if there's room at Independence and it would help keep the building size down, and I'm not sure why we wouldn't at least look at that.
You're talking about the new development, the new construction?
I mean, I'm not sure. I don't know the details of the construction.
Projections related to the new construction, yes. That's why I'm bringing this up.
Repeat that again?
If we have it wrong.
What did you just say? We had a bug up here that was flying and I wasn't listening. Sorry about that.
So again, what we're trying to avoid is us to go do this work and then come back and say, well, you missed something. So one of the pieces that we talked about earlier today was the concept related to, we have projections that are going to 550 for Bayside Six. And that 550 is based on that projected new construction. And a way to solve that, what our direction is, is you don't look at rezoning to solve that problem. You build a building that supports the population that's in that area. But you could direct us that, no, we don't want you to account for that, because we're just going to do a rezoning and send them to a different school. What I'm trying to ensure right now is, we didn't get that feedback as part of your breakout discussions, looking for confirmation of that so that we know that that is the lack of guidance that we're receiving.
Okay. Why don't we start with Ms. Brown?
All right, thank you. So I don't want to jump on the rezoning without the other discussion, without the other discussion about what it would look like if Bayside Six went back to Bayside Middle. So I kind of think that would be, personally, I feel like that would be a little preemptive to kind of not have that holistic look before we decide to do that. And definitely don't want to get the community concerned about it if they don't need to be.
Yeah. So the reason why I'm bringing this up, this goes back to time is money. Every month, 425,000. So in the example that you described, Ms. Brown, is, hey, if we come back and we did this work and we said, hey, so based on everything the school board determines, based on that feedback, we want to keep Bayside Six separate. What we're trying to avoid is a, well, hey, can you guys now go and look at this other rezoning? We're trying to understand all of the things that would need to accomplish, what the guidance is of the board, so that we can keep this moving. That's why I'm bringing it up.
So I definitely think then, I personally would like to see the options laid out so that it's easier for us to have a decision and some consensus, because I don't think without knowing all the details, it's going to be kind of hard to come to a conclusion there.
Okay, so we have one.
And then I do actually, I would love to see the classroom ratio stay the same, because when I think about what the purpose of schools are, right? It's academics. So the lower the classroom ratio, the better, in my opinion. However, there are definitely some obvious physical concerns. So I'm fine with evaluating it, but I would like to see the classroom ratio be explored more. I was a little surprised that the small workspace reductions wasn't one of the things that was mentioned, because I had talked to several colleagues before this about that. But anyway, and then I do think that we should really evaluate sending the sixth graders to the middle. I'm looking at our enrollment here for middle schools, and I see that we have four others with similar enrollment, not projected enrollment, but actual enrollment. And so I think it's definitely worth looking at. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Mannan.
Yeah, so I share Ms. Owens' ideas or concerns, I don't know if they were concerns, regarding the different schedules of the fourth and fifth graders versus the sixth graders. And that's one of the reasons why I want to look at the sixth graders going back to the middle school campus. And regarding the new development and rezoning, I think that that should definitely be on the table. I mean, I'm not saying yes or no that I want that, but I think it should be explored. Because if we can accommodate those students better, or if we can accommodate those students in another school, why would we spend the extra money to build another school larger? And transition times for the students in the tri-campus has always been a concern to me, and it still remains a concern. And I don't know if either of the answers here fixes that. But you get the students, they're going to a school for two years, they build relationships with the custodians, with the administration, and then they're going to another school. And that is the constant change that I think that is the negative in this model. So I just thought I'd throw that out there. Thanks.
All right, Ms. Williams.
Yes, to investigate that, sixth graders going back. But I do think that I am interested, I guess, I guess we didn't make it clear in our group because we were thinking that you needed to look at where the sixth graders are going to be first. But I think in any case, we do need to look at potential rezoning wherever they are, because especially if I'm hearing from colleagues, you want to keep class size 21, it's probably going to require some rezoning because of the numbers. So I think that we do need to keep that as a possibility of looking at what it would look like to rezone to other area of middle schools.
That's good. This is the direction we're going. So we got three. You can see where we're looking for a preponderance of the school board that are looking to provide this guidance. This is why I brought this up, because I didn't want this to get missed.
Well, Ms. Anderson's next.
This is for administration. If we so choose to send those students, those sixth graders, back to Bayside Middle, can we, administrators, can we accommodate them at a 20 to 1 or even 21 to 1 ratio? If we put them back at Bayside Middle?
That's what we will come back to you with.
Oh, you're going to explore that?
That's the whole reason that we're getting the guidance, is so that we know what to come back with you, to you, to be able to share with you. So that will absolutely be part of what we share with you.
Okay. Because that's what I would want to see, and I think I made that clear earlier, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, and I agree. We had a colleague that also asked for the data or something more concrete than, other than, it looks like it's working. So, yeah, I think that it would be really helpful to have the information about the benefits of the separation of the sixth graders and take it from there. So I think that really, I agree with most of the people that have spoken here, that we need to have some information, because it doesn't even make sense to talk about, you know, sixth grade, fourth, fifth, you know, if we're not even going to keep the sixth graders there. So I think that that is definitely the first discussion. So that's just my opinion. Anything else, Mr. Freeman?
I don't believe so. I think we have everything we need to talk about.
No, just so, again, we appreciate the exercise. I think what we all need to understand is that this is going to be a decision that gets made where six votes are going to carry. And there's going to be compromise from what, in the end, because we're going to be driven by restrictions of revenues to be able to take care of this. But we appreciate this, and we'll, I'll get with Mr. Freeman, and we'll figure out the next time we can get back in front of you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. It is now 5:29. In lieu of our time, we are just going to recess at this point. So we will see everyone back at 6 o'clock.